At this point, go ahead, Kevin.
Good evening. I'd like to extend a welcome to everyone, Mayor Yanish, our council members, members of their families, my fellow staff members, and of course, our distinguished guest, Judge Spilseth. The City of Wilmer conducted an election on November 6, 2012, which resulted in the citizens re-electing four council members to their respective wards. Dennis Anderson, first ward; Tim Johnson, second ward; Steve Aman, third ward; and Jim Dokken, fourth ward. As city clerk and chief official in charge of voting, I would like to take this opportunity to present a certificate of election to each member. The certificate states, "I, Kevin Halliday, City Clerk of the City of Wilmer and State of Minnesota, do hereby certify that at a general election held in said city and state on Tuesday, being the sixth day of November 2012, Dennis Anderson in the first ward, Tim Johnson in the second, Steve Aman in the third, and Jim Dokken in the fourth, received the highest number of votes cast for the office of council member in the City of Wilmer, State of Minnesota, and was therefore duly elected to set office as it appears on the official election returns in canvas on file in my office. Witness my hand and seal on the seventh day of January. Gentlemen, congratulations." At this moment, I would like to introduce our Honorable Judge Donald Spilseth.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We are going to take these one at a time, so we'll take four oaths, one at a time, and if any family members or special friends would like to come join us, that would be fine. We'll begin with Council-Elect Dennis Anderson. Mr. Anderson, would you go forward? I'm going to administer the oath at this time. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Dennis Anderson..."
"I, Dennis Anderson."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support the constitutions of the United States and the State of Minnesota..."
"...support the constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota."
"...and the Wilmer City Charter..."
"...and the Wilmer City Charter."
"...and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the City of Wilmer..."
"...and I will discharge faithfully the office of the duties of the City of Wilmer."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
It's official.
Thank you.
Tim Johnson? "I, Tim Johnson..."
"I, Tim Johnson."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support the constitutions of the United States and of the State of Minnesota..."
"...that I support the constitutions of the United States and the State of Minnesota."
"...and the Wilmer City Charter..."
"...and the Wilmer City Charter."
"...and I will discharge faithfully..."
"...and I will discharge faithfully."
"...the duties of the office of the City of Wilmer..."
"...the duties of the office of the City of Wilmer."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
Congratulations, Tim.
"I, Steve Aman."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support..."
"That I will support."
"...the constitutions of the United States..."
"...the constitution of the United States."
"...and of the State of Minnesota..."
"...and the State of Minnesota."
"...and the Wilmer City Charter..."
"...and the Wilmer City Charter."
"...and that I will discharge faithfully..."
"...that I will discharge faithfully."
"...the duties of the office..."
"...the duties of the office."
"...of the City of Wilmer..."
"...of the City of Wilmer."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
Congratulations.
"I, Jim Dokken."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support..."
"That I will support."
"...the constitutions of the United States..."
"...the constitutions of the United States."
"...and of the State of Minnesota..."
"...and of the State of Minnesota."
"...and the Wilmer City Charter..."
"...and the Wilmer City Charter."
"...and that I will discharge faithfully..."
"...and that I will discharge faithfully."
"...the duties of the office of the City of Wilmer..."
"...of the duties of the office of the City of Wilmer."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
"...to the best of my judgment and ability."
Congratulations.
Would you go over there and sign the official one with the judge? Dennis. Dennis and Steve, there's an official one to sign.
All right, I'll sign the oath. Congratulations to you all, and I hope we have a successful year with the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for coming. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish?
Here.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Aman?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Dokken?
Here.
Fagerly?
Here.
DeBlee?
Here.
Eight present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Reverend Torgerson, would you do us the invocation, please?
Gathered in unity, let us engage in a moment of silence. God of life, in this new year 2013, at the beginning of a new effort, we ask you to inspire these city leaders with humility, wisdom, courage, compassion, and generosity. May they be humble in acknowledging that it is your will and your way that they serve, and that it is all the people they serve, and all of your people whom you created and love. May they be wise in being guided by your spirit, wise in consulting your people, and wise in practicing openness, cooperation, and collaboration for nurturing a common purpose and a common good. May they be compassionate in listening to the rich diversity of voices in our community and considering the needs of the most vulnerable and helpless. May they be generous in seeking and respecting the thoughts of others, and may they work together with city staff in a respectful, collegial manner. May we understand that living gratefully is always to be mindful of the blessings of faith, family, friends, community, and the opportunity to serve. Generous and grace-filled God, bless these public servants and sustain them in difficult, challenging, and yet hopeful days ahead, in the name of all that is holy. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor, for giving the invocation. Such a nice one, I might say. In continuing along the line of... I have a special announcement to make, you know, with our new fire chief is here. Would you please stand and let us recognize you, Mr. Gary Hendrickson?
Thank you very much for being here. Are there any proposed additions and deletions to the agenda?
Moved to prove, moved to prove, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there a discussion? Go ahead.
I'd like to pull the mayoral appointment to Municipal Utilities Commission, please.
Any further additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, we will approve the consent items with the exception of the mayoral appointment to the Municipal Utilities Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Would you like to pull that, Councilman?
Yes, a question.
Discuss it.
Yeah. I would like to know what the thinking is on appointing Mr. Gimzy. I mean, certainly qualified individual, but we had an individual that had served two terms and was willing to serve a third, and that person was not... Reappointed, and I guess I'd just like to know what the thinking is on that.
Well, the thinking is very obvious on that, is that we were very fortunate, if you will, to have Senator Gimzy with 17 years' experience with Northern Natural Gas, and I just thought it was a better choice at this particular time to appoint the experience that we've had. Hope that explains what you're asking?
Maybe a little bit. It wasn't much over a year ago that the individual that we're not reappointing, Mr. Baker, we couldn't, we couldn't say enough good things about him. He led us through some terribly dark hours, very difficult times at the utilities, got us through that. The utilities is functioning very well right now, and I just, I don't understand why we don't want to go with that experience. And it was only a few years ago that we changed the charter to allow the appointment for a third term, recognizing the difficulties and the learning curve that was required to be an effective member of the Utilities Commission. So I don't understand this, and this is certainly nothing against Mr. Gimzy. It's just that I would, I would much rather see Mr. Baker reappointed.
Well, I can understand that, Councilman. Did you have a question?
Well, you were making a comment.
Oh, I was just going to make a comment on the fact that Senator, former Senator Gimzy has the contacts down at the state capital yet that may help us along the road. I've also discussed this at length with the general manager of the Municipal Utilities and came to the agreement that this was the best opportunity that we could offer.
Councilman?
I guess I agree with Councilmember Anderson. I don't see why Mr. Baker is being passed over for the reappointment. He's been on there six years, he has a lot of experience, he led the commission very diligently during the time we had with the, over the last year with the manager change and replacement. He's got, he's got a lot of experience, he's got a lot of business experience, he's got a lot of good personnel experience with dealing with personnel issues, which has helped the commission quite extensively. I guess I just don't understand why we're, why we're not doing a reappointment. I know nothing against, against Mr. Gimzy, but I know he's got, say he's got experience in the gas industry. We're talking about electric utility here, not a gas utility. They burn gas, but not very much. I guess I just don't understand why we're not replacing him. We went, we went ahead and the charter was changed just so we could keep experience on these commissions and boards over a longer period of time, and now the first opportunity you have to reappoint somebody under that, those conditions, you want to bypass it. I just don't understand it.
Well, and I can understand your concern, Councilman. I will say the fact that it is a mayor's appointment, and it's a mayor's choice as to how they, who they appoint and how they appoint and when they appoint. I guess I would have to say that I made the best decision I know how to make, and we'll have to live with that, I'm afraid.
Councilman, Dr.?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask our city attorney, that is, the purview of the mayor to reappoint or appoint at will. Is that not correct?
Certainly, the act of placing a name and nomination or appointment is the mayor's to make. It does require the approval, if my recollection is correct, of five members of the council.
All right. Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
I'll move to file the minutes.
You have to, excuse me, I'm sorry, you have to vote on that. The item was removed from the consent agenda, you must vote on it separately.
It's my understanding we only need five votes to file the minutes. We've never voted on the minutes before, we just said, move to file the minutes, a second?
This is an agenda item that has to be addressed.
I'll call for the question.
A matter of procedure, doesn't, when the minutes, when it's part of the, the consent agenda is pulled, doesn't somebody have, we've approved, I believe, everything with the exception of this particular item.
Of item G.
So someone will have to move to file this particular thing?
That is correct.
And I'm not going to do that.
To approve item, to approve item G.
That's what I did, I said, move to file those minutes.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood when you said move to file the minutes, it's item G, it's not, that was the misunderstanding with your intent.
Well, it's the minutes of the Municipal Utilities Commission. I'll approve to a...
No.
No.
I see we're being confused. He didn't pull item C, Councilmember Christiansen, he pulled item G.
G.
And so it's an action item when we approve all appointments.
Sorry, I think that's the, that's the confusion we have, so you would, the proper motion would be to, on item G, mayoral appointment.
Then I will move to approve the mayoral appointment under item G.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve item G, the mayoral appointment of the Municipal Utilities Commission. Discussion, Councilman?
Mr. Mayor requests a roll call vote.
That way we can, go ahead.
May I comment briefly, Ms.?
Sure.
You know, this is really unusual. We get a lot of people wanting to be on our commissions, I think that's a, that's a heck of a compliment. I wish we had more people willing to serve.
I understand.
There's a lot, there's a lot of other, there's a lot of other boards that are coming up, and I hope that, you know, they'll be filled too. As far as which individual should be on there, I think either one are outstanding people. To me, it really doesn't make any difference. There's one out of seven commissioners? We have Elias on there. Bruce has been on there for a long time. He always reports back to us what's going on. I wish we'd, I wish we'd have more people running. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Aman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlee?
No.
Five ayes, two nays, motion passes.
The motion passes, it carries. At this time, we'll move into the scheduled hearings. Bruce, do you want to talk to us about that? Shall I open the hearing first, Counselor?
Yes, you would open the hearing first.
Open the hearing first?
Correct.
I will open the hearing.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, the hearing tonight is to determine whether or not the former Lincoln School property should be rezoned from government institutional to an R-2 residential classification. The proposal was submitted by the Casa de Misericordia Church, and they are the purchasers of the former Lincoln School building. Typically, in our residential districts, churches are allowed by conditional use, and almost all of our churches do exist in R-2 districts currently. All of the abutting property is zoned R-2, and it was the recommendation of staff and the planning commission to rezone the site to allow for the eventual church. The church will still need to follow through with a conditional use permit request with the planning commission. So it's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be adopted, given a number, and
Are there any comments from the audience in the hearing? If not hearing none, I will close the hearing and open it up for discussion amongst the council.
I'll move the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the hearing.
Adopt the ordinance and give it a number.
Adopt a number and give it a number, thank you. All those in favor, shall I?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Questions?
I have a question. Mr. Peterson, are they aware of the fact that we may bring Ninth Street through to Trot Avenue? That's been discussed, and in the conditional use, will that be discussed with the group that bought the Lincoln School?
That has been mentioned to them. None of the property being conveyed to the church is part of what would be the eventual right-of-way.
Okay.
That is currently owned by the school yet.
Okay.
The school has expressed some interest in working out a deal with the city to acquire that property so that we would have a larger contiguous park. Once that happened, the city would have the right-of-way there for the extension of Ninth Street if the, if that would be the direction the council would eventually decide to go.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Aman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlee?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. At this point, I would like to give the mayor state of the city address, and I would like to welcome and say good evening to the citizens of Wilmer, the members of the city council, the city staff, the media, and the guests. 2012 was a very successful year for the City of Wilmer, and I would just like to take the opportunity to review some of the highlights. We saw changes in the management in the Wilmer Utilities, and I believe we are on the right path with Wes Hoppy as the new general manager. We successfully adapted a new downtown plan for the City of Wilmer. The planning effort actually began at the end of 2011 with a number of community meetings. The plan was adopted in April and has outlined our goals and hopes for the revitalization of downtown Wilmer. Those goals include improving access, movement, and parking in downtown, improving open space and green space trails, improving building conditions, enhancing the business mix and redevelopment, improving housing in downtown. For 2013, we will see the completion of the parking study, the expansion and connection of the Glacier Lakes Trail to downtown Wilmer. Also, we have already expanded the boundaries of the central business district to encourage redevelopment and denser, and dense development in our central core area. We launched a new and updated City of Wilmer website, developed entirely in-house by city staff. The new website presents a much more professional and vibrant image of our city, as well as making it easier for citizens and visitors to find important information. Another key success, and one that I'm very proud of, was the airport land release, which will allow for the expansion of the industrial park, the construction of the Western Intercepter Sewer Line. The first 90 acres of land was released by the FAA in May, and the second phase of 140 acres was released in November. There is one remaining land release left, as well as determining a resolution for the former terminal airport building. The land release was one of the greatest successes in 2012 and was many years in the making. I look forward to seeing the industrial development that will grow our employment and tax base. The necessary sewer expansion will be funded in part through the local option sales tax. I am also very proud to say that this sales tax concluded in 2012, just as the city council promised that it would. And I have not forgotten about the new airport. In December, the city council approved a new contract for the management of the airport, which I believe will increase the level of service. And the Economic Development Commission will be working with city staff to more actively market our airport in 2013. The city council also adopted a $31.7 million budget for the city, of which $15.2 million is for general operations. The 2012 budget also included a levy increase of $147,000, which along with other funds will be used to allow for an additional $240,000 to be dedicated to street maintenance, in this case, overlay for 2013. This is in addition to approximately $2 million, which is in the budget for street repairs. The city also established a new capital budgeting process and began to lay out a five-year vision for capital improvements. The capital and infrastructure needs for the city continue to grow, and we must catch up on our deferred maintenance. Finally, we continue to see growth in new construction, especially commercial development. In 2012, commercial industrial construction valuation increased by over $1.8 million or 18 percent. This increase helped to offset some other decreases resulting in an overall construction valuation increase of $1.1 million or 7 percent for the city. The city also saw over 45 dilapidated structures removed or demolished. The city also maintained its Double A bond rating and saw some stability in local government aid revenues. As we look forward to 2013, we can look for the following opportunities for success. Quiet zones, another area that I campaigned hard on. Work is planned for Wilmer Avenue as well as Trot Avenue in 2013. Planning will also occur for Lakeland Drive, which will mean that by the end of 2014, three of five quiet zones will be completed. Organizational study. The city council will be reviewing the response... The city council will be reviewing responses to our requests for proposals which will assist the city staff and council in analyzing and possibly restructuring the city organization to more efficiently and effectively deliver city services. Growth. Nearly $20 million worth of new construction awaits final applications for next year, or for this year, actually. Final applications and permitting. The projects we will see in 2013 include expansions to the Ridgewater College, the Rice Care Center, and Mills Auto Center. As well, we have continued to develop, as well as development at the Midwest Technology Campus and Mid-Central Research and Outreach Center. One of my goals for 2013 is to investigate opportunities to work with other communities and to partner with them. And as a matter of fact, I believe we have an appointment the 31st of January with some of the surrounding mayors to talk about this and see how we can work together. Before concluding, I would like to say a special thank you to our city administrator, Charlene Stevens, and the rest of the city staff, and to our hard-working city council for all they have done to make this a strong, growing, and vibrant city. But I also like to say, your mayor and your council are not perfect. However, I will say to the citizens of Wilmer, you have a great, dedicated council, and they want to do what is best for the city. I look forward to a successful and prosperous 2013. Thank you, and may God continue to bless our city. Thank you very much. At this point, we will hear the Public Works State Committee report for...
Open forum.
Open forum.
Open forum, I'm sorry. Yep, there it is. At this point, we will hear the open forum. Jay Lawton, would you like to speak to us? Come up to the podium and introduce yourself and give your name and address?
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm Jay Lawton. I live at 424th Avenue Southwest. I'm here just with some concerns as far as the publication of city notices. I think you all received an email from me recently. Mr. Christensen graciously gave me some information on that. I appreciate that, Ron. We do spend an awful lot of money on public notices. My concern is, if we go to another publication, which I understand we have no choice but to print that stuff, even with the Internet. My concern is if we publish in the Raymond Prinsberg paper or the Lakes Area paper, it doesn't serve any public interest in my eye because I don't believe they have any, they might have limited, but very little exposure in Wilmer itself. Mr. Christensen also pointed out that the Internet is actually the media of choice, and I agree with that. The only problem at this point is, I looked up the demographics, and in the age group that I would estimate probably pays the most attention to these kinds of things, the 50 to 64-year-old age group, 23 percent of that population still is not using the Internet. When you move into the 65 and older group, 47 percent of those people have no Internet access. So I just, I'm not here trying to tell you what to do. I'm just expressing a concern, and I think if we're trying to serve the public interest with these publications, to publish it in a paper in another community may not fit that bill. But thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Jay. Don't run away. I'm going to ask our councillor to explain to us what we talked about at the previous meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. The city, as a result of action taken at the last city council meeting, solicited proposals from various newspapers, qualified newspapers under state statute in the community or surrounding communities, and my understanding is the city received three proposals. By state law, they have, the city has to appoint or designate the newspaper located in the city as its official newspaper, which in this case is the West Central Tribune, and neither of the other two papers that submit a proposal were located in the city. So from that perspective, really, the city only has one choice on that item, which action the city has taken in the meeting that preceded this one, to designate the West Central Tribune as the official newspaper of record for the city.
Thank you, councillor, for explaining that. Thank you, Jay, for your concern.
Thank you, Mayor.
Kathy Miller.
No, I don't have any comments, sorry.
No comment?
I just put my name down. Please do.
Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. John Sullivan, 508 Southeast 13th Street, Wilmer.
If I can refresh your memory, you have three minutes.
I know it.
Okay.
I'm going to be quick.
All right.
First of all, I want you all to know that I am a friend of the mayor's, and I want Mr. Beatty to know that I tried to get him to reappoint him to that commission. I want that done and said. I do think and look at both sides of the street. But what I want to talk about right now, and I'll try to be quick, is the bias that the West Central Tribune puts on the city council and the mayor. Why didn't they in the past mayor term and council term investigate any of the wrongdoings that were done by the previous mayor and the council? And just to run through a couple of quick ones, is using local lots and sales tax to pave two softball parking lots, Swanson Field, baseball and softball, when they would not agree to organize the charter commission for probably three years, and it hadn't been organized since 1969? Now, all of a sudden, I kept pushing, and they finally organized it, and it's getting done. And the thing that really bothered me about that one is the mayor and the current administrator at that time brought that resolution back to a council meeting, which was unwarranted and unnecessary because the resolution had been passed. Each council member selected their member, and they were to have gone to the judge at that time for appointment. I think it was brought back to the council so that the mayor could chastise me in a way that I don't think anybody's ever heard, and called me unfit, and not disrailed on me. Did the West Central Tribune do anything then? No. I could go on and on. I've got about eight different things here, but I'm going to let it go at that. If you want to know what they are, let me know. I think the West Central Tribune needs to take another look at what they're doing. And should people ask questions? Yeah, I do all the time, you know that. I think so, but it seems only action happens when an elitist group speaks, that they don't really have an issue except to bully, and I think that's what they're doing. And I think the West Central Tribune has grabbed onto that because they're an elitist group and not just a sole individual like myself. Thank you.
Moving on, we will go to the Public Works Committee report for December 18th. Ron, I believe that would be you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works did meet on Tuesday, December 18th, 2012. One change in the preamble to this, it says councilmember DeBlique was there, and then later it says Anderson was substituting for Mr. DeBlique. Mr. DeBlique was not at the meeting.
I was not in attendance, sir.
We'll correct that. Thank you.
Item number one had to do with sump pump inspection update from Bolton and Mink, and this was for information only. In May of last year, 2011, we solicited quotes from engineering firms to perform inspections on sump pumps in two areas of the city. The low quote of 29 grand was received from Bolton and Mink, and a contract was executed in June of 2011. Their project manager for the sump pump inspection program was in front of the committee to give us an update. During the summer and fall of 2011, 92 percent of the units of these two specific areas of the city were inspected. Of these 92 percent, 55 had new winter discharge permits issued by the city, and approximately 48 units remained to be inspected. The project manager overviewed some lift station statistics from Country Club Drive. In 2011 and 2012, from January through July, precipitation received was about 15 inches. In 2011, the pump ran 1,465 hours, and in 2012, it ran 1,033 hours, showing a significant drop in the groundwater infiltration into the wastewater system. After discussion, it was the direction of the committee that the remaining property owners be contacted by letter and asking them to allow for an inspection of their property. If no response was received, the fine established by our ordinance was $100 a day for noncompliance and would be implemented. That was information only. Item number two had to do with consideration of persons eligible for liquor licenses. Our city clerk informed us that TPI Corp., Inc., doing business as Holiday and Greenmill is planning a $10 million expansion of the motel's Greenmill Restaurant and Bar and adding a Hurricane Grill and Wings Restaurant. It is their intention to have two separate restaurants and bars with individual cash registers, which according to the state of Minnesota Alcohol Enforcement Division calls for two liquor and restaurant licenses. Our City Municipal Code states that no license shall be granted or held by a person who is directly or indirectly interested in any other establishment in the city to which either an on-sale or off-sale license has been issued. This is a city regulation only, and Minnesota statute allows the licensure under different limitations. It was staff's recommendation that the city remove the single license barrier by drafting, redrafting the ordinance. Motion is made, seconded and passed, and I will introduce the motion to direct the city attorney to redraft our municipal code section 3-114 subdivision 6, which limits liquor license to one person.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to direct the city attorney to redraft municipal code section 31-114 subdivision 6, which limits liquor license to one person. Is there any discussion? I understand this is a motion.
Standard motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Item number three was the consideration of a liquor license fee payment in full at renewal time. Current policy is to offer on-sale and off-sale liquor license holders the option of paying half of their license fee at the time of renewal, which is April 25th, and the remaining half in late October. Staff is recommending the city discontinue that practice and collect the full annual liquor license fee each April, when renewal is up. This would allow staff to spend more time on other tasks rather than mail reminder letters to collect the second half of the fee. Once again, a motion is made and seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion that we change the city's policy and collect the full annual liquor license fee at each April renewal time period.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to change the city's policy and collect the full annual liquor license fee at each April renewal time period. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Item number four was consideration of increase in liquor license investigation fees. Our city clerk recommended an increase in the liquor license fee, investigation fee charts for individuals. Current fees, which we adopted decades ago, are $75 for individuals and $150 for partnerships and $300 for corporations. The individual rate is too low, and the investigation checklist includes not only drivers' names, but utilities, property tax records, abdilinguqu payments, and nearly equals investigative work of multiple owners of a partnership. Recommended increase would be to $125 for individuals. Once again, a motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion to change the investigation fee for an individual seeking a liquor license from $75 to $125.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to change the investigation fee for an individual seeking a liquor license from $75 to $125. Is there any discussion?
Clarification, Mr. Mayor, the...
Sir, go ahead.
The individual and the partnership, they would remain the same, those fees?
The individual and the partner?
No. Partnership would be $150. Would be at least two people. Individual would be one.
And the corporations is 300. Those fees are to remain the same?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Item number five was ordering preparation of improvement reports for the 2013 street and other improvements. Our Planning and Development Services Director, Mr. Peterson, presented the proposed list of improvements for 2013. It includes reconstruction, overlay, and new construction, railroad quiet zones, and other miscellaneous projects. Staff briefly reviewed the streets and miscellaneous items proposed for construction, which is based off of the five-year street improvement plan. Their series improvements include reconstruction of approximately 1.47 miles of street, 1.05 miles of overlay of various streets, and .69 miles of new construction to include Wilmer Avenue Southwest from Industrial Boulevard to 22nd Street Southwest, and Fourth Avenue Southwest from 28th Street Southwest to cul-de-sac. Included also were two federal projects, the trail connection from downtown Robins Island and Trot Avenue Southwest Quiet Zone. Other miscellaneous items included in the construction of a sidewalk along 11th Avenue Southeast from the middle school to 6th Street Southeast, some stormwater-related improvements yet to be identified, and seal coating and crack sealing various areas. Specifics of the streets are detailed in the project list presented by staff. Following a discussion, there was a motion made and seconded for the following, and I will introduce the resolution that we order preparation of the improvement report for the 2013 street and other improvements.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to order preparation of the improvement report for the 2013 street and other improvements. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Item number six were preliminary project budgets. Staff prepared the preliminary budgets for the 2013 improvement projects. Funding sources necessitate five budgets in order to account for the use of federal and state funding. A motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, that we approve the five budgets as presented by staff, and I understand we need five resolutions for this.
We do.
Each resolution is to say, I don't have listed any or which projects they are.
Well, we could just simply go by the estimated total cost on the top of the budgets that you have in your packet. First one is 2.3 million. If you found those, Mayor, there's five in a row. About five pages back of where you are.
So the first resolution, there's no number on it. It just says project number 1301. The budget is for $2,340,774, and I will introduce that resolution to approve that.
Second. Where are you at, Ron? There's no page numbers, but it's several pages back behind our minutes.
I think you have to keep going the other way. Minutes. You're right here. You got it.
Was there a second?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I second.
A motion has been made and seconded to the preliminary project number 1301.
The estimated cost of 2.3 million in the streets listed, the streets are listed in the lower right-hand corner. Candy Ojai Avenue Southwest, 2nd Street Southeast, Havana Street.
Okay, are we going to take just one roll call?
One at a time.
One at a time.
All five.
For five of them, yeah.
Candy Ojai Avenue, $1,032,805,000.
Actually, all I need is the totals, which is 2.34 million dollars.
And list the project?
It is a preliminary project, it is for, the projects are listed by number 1301 is this project, and it, and the approximate total is 2.34 million dollars. oh one is this project, and it, and the approximate total is two point three million.
Project number thirteen oh one for two million, three hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Is there a discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
I will introduce the second one, which is preliminary project number thirteen oh two with an estimated total cost of one point three, four, six, two, eight, five million dollars. Second. And I'll just briefly describe those, Wilmer Avenue Southwest, Fourth Avenue Southwest, and Wilmer Avenue Southwest.
A motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
It's been done.
Well, seconded. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
I will introduce resolution number three, which is preliminary project number thirteen oh three. The budget estimated cost is one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded for project number thirteen oh three with the budget of one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, one hundred, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I will introduce resolution number four, which is the preliminary project budget for thirteen oh four. The estimated total cost is one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventeen dollars, and it is a bike path from downtown to Robins Island. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to the preliminary project number thirteen oh four with a budget of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventeen dollars for a bike path downtown Robins Island, downtown to Robins Island. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce resolution number five, which is the preliminary budget for project number thirteen oh five. The estimated total cost is two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and that is Trot Avenue Southwest, Industrial Boulevard, Sixteenth Street Southwest. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded for project number thirteen oh five. It is the estimated total cost of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and that is for Trot Avenue Southwest. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Our last item was the consideration, consideration of an offer to gift property to the city. Staff received an offer to gift the former Rule Tire property to the city. The heirs of Jim and Betty Rule are offering three parcels of land with several buildings to be demolished at an estimated cost of fifty to seventy thousand dollars. Staff has also determined that five underground storage tanks were removed, but the possibility of contaminated soil in the area is yet to be determined. A phase-one investigation of the soil conditions can be performed for approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars. There is currently nine thousand, five hundred dollars due in back taxes on the property. Some possible uses for this property were discussed, and a motion was made and seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion to authorize city staff to proceed with phase-one investigation to determine environmental conditions and to conduct further due diligence. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to authorize the staff to proceed with the phase-one investigation to determine environmental conditions and conduct further due diligence. Is there any discussion? Councilman Amen.
I think, Mr. Mayor, talk about other uses for that area. Mr. Peterson or somebody on the staff, did you discuss those, and could you share those ideas?
Councilmember Amen, there has been no real decisions or, I would say, detailed discussions that have taken place, but among the items we have discussed was some green area, a possible trailhead for access to the Ella Avenue Trail, and ultimately tying into the Robins Island Trail. It would give a second trailhead in the central business district. We talked about the daughters or the heirs of Jim Rule had indicated they'd like something that would reflect positively on their parents, and they had even brought up the idea of a possible viewing area for the railroad yards, a small interpretive display perhaps. And I've also brought the matter up with West Homp at the utilities to see if the utilities had have use for all or part of that property as well. So, what we really need to do first, I believe, is to figure out what it's actually going to cost us to get the free property and then go from there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Consideration of resolutions designating polling places, polling locations for Ward Four special election. Kevin, would you like to explain that to us?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, you are well aware that we have a special election in Ward Four on February twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. In accordance with statutory controls on the election, we need to designate the polling locations for that ward. No surprise here. Fourth Ward, First Precinct is the First Baptist Church, Second Precinct, Calvary Lutheran Church, Third Precinct, Redeemer Lutheran Church. It is staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made for the consideration of the resolution designating polling places for Ward Four special election. Is there any discussion? And that is a roll call? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Kevin, would you like to explain to us the consideration of the fire contract for Dover Township?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, every year at this time, we approve a contract for the six sections in Dover Township that our fire department covers. We use the data that we did prepare for Wilmer Township, which is somewhat a little outdated in the two thousand and eleven because two thousand and twelve data is not all complete. Following the standard formula we've used for years, the cost sharing for Dover Township this year is proposed to be twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. That is staff's recommendation that we move to approve that contract and submit it to the township. Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract with Dover Township and authorize the mayor and the city administrator to execute the contract. Is there any discussion? I see in my notes, Kevin, that it says resolution and the roll call.
Well, sir, I believe a standard motion would work in this case.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. I don't have the copy of the...
I, I do, and I can read those for you.
Would you do that?
Like. For item seventeen, this is based upon the council's discussion at the, at the prior meeting. Item A, committee assignments. The resolution is that be it resolved by the city, council of the city of Wilmer, that the two thousand and thirteen through two thousand and fourteen committee appointments for members of the council shall be in a list of appointments as follow, as follows. Labor Relations Committee Chair, Councilmember Amen, Vice Chair, Councilmember Dacken, and other members, Councilmembers Christensen and Anderson. Finance Committee Chair, Councilmember Anderson, Vice Chair, Councilmember Johnson. Other members will be Councilmember Fagerly and the winner of the Ward Four special election. Community Development Committee Chair, Councilmember Fagerly, Vice Chair, Councilmember DeBlick, other members, Councilmembers Dacken and Councilmembers Johnson. Public Works and Safety Committee, the chair will be Councilmember Christensen, the vice chair will be the winner of the Ward Four special election, and the other members will be Councilmember Amen and Councilmember DeBlick. The council liaison positions are as follows. The Allied Power Board, Councilmember DeBlick. Community Ed and Recreation, Joint Powers Board and Park Board, Councilmember Johnson, and the winner of the Ward Four special election. Economic Development Commission, Councilmembers Anderson, Christensen and Amen. Fire Code Appeals Board, Chair, Councilmember Christensen, Vice Chair, Councilmember Anderson. Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Councilmember Christensen and the alternates, Councilmember Dacken. Human Rights Commission, Councilmember Anderson. Mid-Minnesota Development Commission, Councilmember Fagerly. Municipal Utilities Commission, Councilmember DeBlick and the alternates, Councilmember Dacken. Rice Hospital Board, Councilmember Dacken and the alternates, Councilmember Amen. Transit Joint Powers Board, Councilmembers DeBlick and Councilmember Fagerly. The Vision Twenty Forty Committee, Councilmember DeBlick and the alternates, Councilmember Amen. Wilmer Cable Advisory Board, Councilmember Christensen and Councilmember Anderson. Wilmer Convention and Visitors Bureau, that will be the winner of the, of the Ward Four special election. Wilmer Community and Activity Center Council, Councilmember Johnson. Wilmer Design Center, the liaison is Councilmember Amen. And the Pioneer Land Library System, Councilmember Anderson. That is, that, that's the first resolution for item A.
Okay. Move to approve. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee assignments for the consideration of the reorganizational resolutions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
That is a roll call?
Sure. All five of these are, sir.
Oh, okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Want to go with the mayor pro tem?
The resolution states that whereas the Charter of the City of Wilmer, Municipal Corporation of the State of Minnesota, provides that in the absence or disability of the mayor, an acting mayor shall be appointed by action of the city council, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Wilmer as follows, that during the years two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen, should the mayor, the Honorable Frank Yanis, be, be absent or unable to act as such mayor, that Councilmember Dennis Anderson be and is hereby appointed as acting mayor to act in all said circumstances and as set forth in the Charter of the City of Wilmer.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to have Dennis Anderson as the mayor pro tem.
Question. Mr. Mayor, we had eight votes, and there is only seven people there on the mayor pro tem position. Could somebody explain that to me?
Was there eight votes?
Somebody voted twice. I believe that's what happened.
Ask to me. Did it affect the result?
I may be mistaken, but that's what I came up with.
Councilmember Amen, that may be correct. The process was... Well, the process was people were placed in nomination, and then a vote was taken, roll call vote in each case. And whoever tallied the most aye votes was, I, I thought the consensus in the room was whoever tallied the most aye votes was selected.
I believe, Tim, you voted twice. Well, actually, by that, if he made, by his statement, if he made a nomination, each one was a motion. And you voted on each one. Maybe if somebody got one aye and six nays, that's fine, but each one would be a motion then if it's a nomination. So each one would stand by itself.
Does it affect the outcome at all?
Potentially, if the will of the council were that you could only vote for one member placed in nomination, it could. I haven't, I haven't gone and looked at it, but...
Well, that's my point. I wasn't aware that we could vote twice for two different candidates when four of them were running. That was not specified, and I was not aware of that. If I would have known that, that would have changed the outcome of the vote.
Well, there's a couple options. This was...
Well, it's not...
It could have been, the procedure was... It was not something that was agreed to in advance. It was something that I thought we kind of worked through the council as a whole. The way I was helping you work through it was each of these nominations were a separate motion, so I was not concerned with whether council members had voted for more than one member. If the council, at this moment, is concerned with that process, there's absolutely nothing to prevent the council from voting again. It's important, I think, that everyone is...
I just, thank you.
It's tempting of that...
I thought I was right. I left the meeting, but I didn't quite understand what happened. And not questioning the outcome or who got it, I just don't think it's right that two people or one person's able to vote twice. If that was known, I, I've never been in a meeting where that was done before unless you're running in a primary, which in this case, there probably was, because there were more than one, two candidates. So, it makes it a little more complicated, and I've never had experience before. If anybody in the council has before in the past, please let me know, but it's, it's highly unusual. And I guess I'm questioning whether or not the council wants to do anything with it or not, or if we want to reconsider our vote and everybody vote, have the ability to vote twice rather than just once.
Councilmember Amen, at this point, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. If, I, I guess, if the council is, as a whole, uncomfortable with the process that took place in the special meeting, it could vote against this resolution, in which case you would still have the opportunity to end the obligation to select the mayor pro tem.
Question also, but if the voting procedure was not done correctly, why are we even discussing this? We have to go back and re-vote.
That's my point. If, if you're, if the council as a whole is not willing to accept the process that took place in the special meeting, that resulted in Councilmember Anderson, in my understanding, having been selected, the council can vote down this motion, which is to approve the resolution. It can vote down this resolution. In that case, then there will have been no appointment made, and we're kind of back to square one, and we can revisit that issue and take another vote, seek a motion for a nomination, and, and do this again.
I understand that, but I, I think issues should be ruled out of order, and we weren't, we did not do it appropriately. So, I don't know if the motion should even be acceptable if this, that's my, my interpretation of it, because there was no really clear definition to the people that voted on, on it, and it was flawed, and I was not aware of the ability to vote twice. So therefore, we were voting without true understanding of how the vote was going to
Counselor, can I add something here? Would that be just the mayor pro tem vote that would be taken over?
I believe that's correct. If there are other nominations or selections that the council made in the special meeting, certainly a council member could voice their opposition to it, and that would influence the vote. I don't see that this motion is out of order, but certainly if the council as a whole I don't see that this motion is out of order, but certainly if the council as a whole is not willing to accept that process, it has the power at this point to vote against this resolution. In which case, we will go back and select a mayor pro tem in this meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first time that we've had a reorganization where we voted out loud, every chairman, the mayor pro tem. Past years, we always did a private vote, put it on a piece of paper, sit on the table and read them. It's very uncomfortable in there doing a voice vote. Very uncomfortable. All in favor, so-and-so aye, so-and-so nay, 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 aye, aye. I didn't like the way it was done at all. I agree with Mr. Ammon. I may have changed my vote on another motion if I'd have known I could vote different on two different motions. I assume we couldn't, as did, I think, Steve, too. I would have felt much better if we would have done a private vote, wrote it on a piece of paper, put it in, and the top voter gets the job. Or if there's a tie, you know, you revote. That's what we've done in the past, and I didn't really understand why we did what we did in there, four separate motions for four separate people. And you could vote for two of them, or you could vote against all of them, even the one you nominated. Something didn't seem right. I think you were confused in there also why we were doing four separate motions. I...
Councilmember Christensen, if I can address that a bit, and I'll start from the practice as I understand it, to do a secret ballot essentially. And there's, I mean, this is a meeting of the quorum of the council. It's required to be open under the open meeting law, and there's a legal issue to have a secret ballot in an open meeting. So we couldn't do that. So granted, this may not have been the cleanest procedure, and I'm sensing among several council members unhappiness with the procedure we used, in which case my suggestion is that you would vote against this resolution, and then we would need to undergo a different process or a process with everyone with a better understanding of how it's going to work in this meeting today to select the mayor pro tem. Certainly, my intention was not to confuse anyone, and I apologize if that seems to have
We voted two different ways at that meeting. We had a voice vote for four different people, and then there was, Mr. DeBlick called for a roll call vote whereby we then made a motion for four different people and voted four different times. The voice vote, I thought, was pretty clear. When we did the motion vote, several people or a couple changed, well...
From their voice vote.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. I wasn't comfortable with it. I just... We just got the book on the standard codes of policies directive. This really shows we need to do our homework again. This is unusual. But I would much rather have the ability of everybody going back and doing it correctly with the understanding of what the outcome of the vote is. It may be the same results, I don't know, but it's not allowing everybody to vote twice, which could bring it down to two individuals rather than four individuals running with the highest vote tally, or it could be a tie for two people to run. And I just want that opportunity made available to everybody on the council, and because I think, I don't know if anybody else is aware of it, but when I, that's why I'm questioning it, and I just think it better to bring it back so we're all on the same page. And that can be questioned afterwards that we didn't follow something correctly.
Counselor, am I correct in assuming that the secret ballot is still not the way to go?
Yes, there's the same legal issue with doing it by secret ballot in this meeting as there would have been in the previous meeting.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, for Mr. Scott. The upcoming election, you know, if there's five people running, whoever got the top vote, the top vote getter gets the job. I was assuming that was the same thing when we voted first. Four people were up for mayor pro tem. We voted once, voice vote, and there was a winner, and then we changed to vote because somebody called for a...
Roll call.
Roll call. And after the roll call, we started making motions, a motion for each individual, and we had different... I don't understand why we did that. I, I'm surprised you didn't jump in and say, wait a minute, we just voted, and now we're going to go to a motion. Again, it was very confusing, completely different than we've done in the past. I mean, and we must have been breaking the law in the past because we always did, when there was more than one person running, we did a private vote, so we didn't go around the table and say, no, I'm, no against Mr. Fagerly or nay against Mr. Ron. We didn't have to do that. It was a little more civil.
Well, Mr. Mayor, having said all that, you have a legitimate resolution on the table with a maker and a second, so should they not repeal their motion in a second? We must act on the resolution on the table.
We vote on the resolution.
If no one's going to pull back their second introduction, you have to call the vote.
Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
No.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
No.
Five ayes, two nays.
Most meeting dates and times?
Yes, this is item C. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Wilmer, Minnesota, that the regular semi-monthly meetings of the city council shall be held at seven P.M. on the first and third Mondays of each month during the next two years, and that the regular place of said meetings shall be in the council chambers of the Wilmer, of the municipal utilities building seven hundred Litchfield Avenue Southwest, Wilmer, Minnesota. And be it further resolved that the time for the adjournment of said council meetings shall be no later than eleven P.M. with the following exceptions. Exception one, an item of business under consideration at eleven P.M. may be disposed. Two, business from the first meeting of the month will be carried over to the second meeting if necessary. And three, any business not completed at the second meeting of the month which is urgent and must have action will be adjourned to a special meeting.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to keep the council meeting and dates and times the same as they were last year. Roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Legal publications?
Yes, item D. Be it resolved by the city, by the city council of the city of Wilmer, Minnesota, Municipal Corporation of the State of Minnesota, the West Central Tribune be designated as the legal newspaper for the city of Wilmer, and that the fees set by state statutes for legal publications be accepted.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the resolution.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to designate the legal newspaper for the city of Wilmer as the West Central Tribune. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Appointing the responsible authority.
This is the final resolution, item E, and it deals with the data practices. Whereas Minnesota statute section thirteen oh two subdivision six requires the city of Wilmer appoint one person as the responsible authority to administer the requirements for collection, storage, use, and dissemination of data on individuals within the city, and whereas the city council of the city of Wilmer shares the concern expressed by the legislature on the responsible use of all city data and wishes to satisfy this concern by immediately appointing an administratively and technically qualified responsible authority as required under the statute, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Wilmer that the city administrator, Charlene Stevens, be appointed as the responsible authority for the purpose of meeting all requirements of Minnesota statute section thirteen oh two through thirteen eighty-seven as amended and with rules as lawfully promulgated by the commissioner of administration as published in the state register.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to appoint the city administrator, Charlene Stevens, to the responsible, to be the responsible authority. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. We are to the point as to where we're going to announce the council committee dates, and that would be Councilman Christensen.
Public Works, Public Safety, next Tuesday, four forty-five. Mr. Peterson, there is a meeting.
And Councilman Anderson.
You know, I didn't get a chance to ask, we're meeting what date?
Monday the fourteenth.
It's not a holiday?
No, the holiday is the following week.
Okay. The financial meet Monday, the fourteenth, at four forty-five.
Councilman Dacken.
No, that would be Councilman Fagerly.
Councilman Fagerly.
I haven't met with Bruce yet. Is it the seventeenth, four forty-five, Thursday?
And Councilman Ammon.
Labor Relations tentative late towards the end of the month, thirtieth, maybe thirty-first, but it hasn't been set up yet with Charlene. We have to, she had some, something come up with her family, so we have to reorganize it, and we'll let you know.
In considering that date, would you please be aware that I plan on being gone the thirty-first?
The thirty-first, you will be gone. We'll take that in consideration. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen, did you say the fifteenth or the sixteenth? I'm sorry.
I said Tuesday.
Okay.
Fifteenth.
Just the fifteenth.
Good move, Ron.
My calendar.
That being said, is there any miscellaneous?
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. I voted twice when I was called for the question, and I did that enthusiastically because I see we people in the design center have been working for, I don't know how many, three, four years, Bev, on getting the trailhead connected to downtown, and I said that and expressed that with enthusiasm. I want to convey that message to the people who are probably wondering why I voted twice, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't vote twice on the mayor's position, but that's okay, or the mayor's pro tem.
Thought there was an echo.
Any further miscellaneous? Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.